Our agenda this evening, we will have an education presentation on our summer trip to Uganda. President's report, reports from our student school board representatives from both schools, superintendent's report, we'll then open it up for public comment, anybody wishing to speak. We will approve the consent vote agenda, which was reviewed in committee earlier this month, and then have updates from the program and personnel committee and facilities and finance committee. Any updates, Stephen, on property?
No.
No, okay. Only a couple of comments on SEDOL, anything from Illinois Association of School Boards?
Yeah.
Okay, and that should be it, all right? Education presentation. Who would like to take that?
Al, you want to introduce Ellen?
As you guys are aware, Vernon Hills High School has a program with Cove Alliance at the school in Uganda, and we have a group here that was with us on the trip this summer, and Ellen's going to start and we'll work on that.
This is our third trip to Uganda. We went in 2009, 2011, and for the, in two weeks in the summer in 2013 here. We had four teachers and two students go this trip, and they're all here tonight, so I'm going to introduce them as they come up to save some time here. But on our trip, the group met and interacted with students in the community that is benefiting from a primary school building funded by Vernon Hills High School in partnership with Cove Alliance. And we actually have the vice president of Cove Alliance here tonight, Darlene Frantonius. She traveled with me on the first two trips, so I just wanted to introduce her. What we did is we brought with us donated clothing, school supply, and sports equipment. During the two weeks in Uganda, the group visited sponsored children from across the area, as well as fellow schoolteachers and principals, all the while distributing donated goods. We also had our first-ever teacher elementary workshop taught by a retired elementary teacher, Andy Cristo. So 24 elementary teachers had their first-ever educational workshop in Uganda, and it was at the Cove Alliance. While the workshop was going on, our Vernon Hills teachers and students taught the classes the whole day, so the Cove teachers could attend the workshop, and that was a fun day. Additionally, Vernon Hills delegation met with high school students at Standard High School for a whole afternoon to answer questions about the US. And the last thing that we did is we spent three days completing a painting project with the brand-new girls dormitory that was built there. So those were some of the activities that we've had. And I'm just going to go through some pictures, and as we go through the pictures, somebody's going to come up and just briefly kind of talk about the pictures and just kind of tell them what impressed them about the trip that they, with their experience. So Jason, come on up first, and when you come up, just tell what you teach at Vernon Hills.
Good evening. My name is Jason Rush. I teach science at Vernon Hills High School, physics. This view right here, I believe I took this picture, we climbed up to Standard High School, which was up on the hill above our school, and we looked down onto the beautiful Cove campus. This really is a great picture of our campus. If you can see, we took a walk all the way up that little road to the furthest tree you could see there one day. That was a beautiful walk. We went to see a cultural dance. I believe it was like the Sunday, first Sunday we were there, and it was a three-and-a-half-hour presentation. I can't believe how quickly three-and-a-half hours went by. The man who introduced everything was sort of a comedian. He was also a professor at the local university, and it was just amazing what a great presentation that was. There's another picture of the dancers. This was...
The 24 teachers.
Oh, yes, this is the 24 elementary school teachers who came from all over, some by bicycle, some by boda boda, which means motorcycle, to participate in the teachers' workshop, the elementary teachers' workshop, and that is on our Cove campus. And there's Ellen. This is the teachers also working. They learned about cooperative learning, and didn't one teacher raise their hand and say, "How do I do cooperative learning when I have 118 kids in my class?" 118 students. And I think I'll end right here. This is me, and with Megan Dorsey on my left, and Katie France, our two students who you'll hear from in a little bit. And we taught our Cove students the school song, the Vernon Hills Cougars' school song. And that was a lot of fun. You know, they have quasi-English accents. The native language is Luganda, but it was colonized by Britain, and they earned their independence in 1962. And if I can give a little rendition of that, it was "Ruler and shout for Vernon Hills, the Cougars on the pro..." The cutest thing to hear that from 175 kids. It really was beautiful, and I'm sure you're going to see it, because we took a lot of video of it, and it will be somewhere eventually.
You'll hear it.
Yes.
Okay. Matt, come on up. So this is more of the workshop.
I'm Matt Clifford. I teach social studies at Vernon Hills. Yeah, here we see we're continuing to sub for the classrooms. And so what we did was, actually, our students played a major role in this. They organized the day for us. So all the teachers went into this workshop, and it was our students that we took with us that organized the substitutes, put together our schedules, and our room assignments. So if anything, they've got a future in administration. And so here we can see the book. Yeah, this is more of our workshop dates. Here we have our students. Actually, it has a nice little courtyard right there at the Cove site, and in the middle is this beautiful mango tree, which is kind of a central location where everybody kind of gathers. And so here we've got a great picture with some of the students under that tree. One of the things we did, as part of humanitarian work, was we went and visited families who are sponsored through Cove, who have students at our site. And so we went to those families, and we actually interviewed them. In some cases, we were able to show them pictures and updated videos on the iPad of their students, but then we interviewed them, and we wrote those letters from those interviews to their sponsored families. And so we got the chance to really experience that, and it was a great experience for our students as well to kind of see how people live in Uganda and what that culture's like. We got a lot of chickens. The families gave, and no one wanted to hold them, they always get passed to me. The families give what they can to the Cove site as a gesture of gratitude, and we got a lot of like bananas and all sorts of agricultural goods, and chickens. And here we are at the, this is at our...
Vocational?
Yeah, vocational school. This is a girls' vocational high school, where they learned a lot of sewing and hairdressing. And this is the boys' vocational high school. And as you can see, the soccer balls there were a very popular item that we were able to give there. I think the PE classes, or PE department athletics, athletics donated those soccer balls, and they were probably the most popular thing that we brought to Uganda, I think. We walked up there that day, they weren't expecting us, because we, the head, the schoolmaster was gone that day, and I thought we were going to get, they were just eyeing these soccer balls, and like, ooh, they really want these things, and we gave them to them, and we were so appreciative. So it's a really popular thing. This is a public school, actually, this is a public school we went and saw, I don't remember the name, because we just visited them very briefly.
It's a country school.
It's in a country, yeah. And as you can see, the differences in that school, the public schools there as compared to the schools that we're helping to provide. St. Jerome's School is far, far beyond what they get from their public institution. I mean, this was a little more than a stable, where kids were actually being stuffed into in learning schools. So what they get from our partnership is quite amazing. And again, we're seeing here, we are visiting families, and this is actually interesting, because we pull up to their house, and they're wearing shirts from two years ago, from the Cove Alliance. So it shows that just whatever we can give is significant, because they're wearing those shirts for the last couple of years. And another public school here. So you can see the difference just in the building structures between what Cove is doing there and what they're getting from the government. This is Capeka, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is downtown Capeka, so you can kind of get the shops. And actually, these shops have been built up. As bad as they look, they've actually been improving their economy in local Capeka due to a paved road going into the town. The brother of the president has a crop for the World Food Program there, and so they got a nice paved road, so they're actually getting a lot of shops that are appearing. That's what we see in downtown Capeka. And here's students gathering. These aren't our students, but our students had to do this every day. They had to take these cans, they call Jerry cans the well, and gather water, because it's their only main source of water. And here's our basketball court. We're one of the few schools with a basketball court in Uganda, so it's quite popular, and they definitely like it.
It's their lunch.
Yeah, this is their lunch, or breakfast, kind of like a brunch, yeah. It's a porridge made out of cornmeal. Students eat a lot of, basically, cornmeal and beans almost every day, so that's the majority of their diet.
The building to the right is the primary building that we donated, it's a primary 1-2 building, so. Okay, next, Kristen, I think we should be here. Yep, oh, perfect timing. She's our Dresser Girl Project, so go ahead, Kristen.
All right, I'm Kristen Johnson. I teach family and consumer sciences here, so one of the courses I have is a clothing construction class, and these are some of the dresses that we had made for the past two years, and then we also got a donation from the Dresser Girl Project based out of Lake County, the lady who collects them. So we took a day, and we got to distribute dresses, brand-new dress to each girl there, and the boys on that day also got T-shirts. In the photos, there are pictures of the students who made them, so the kids got to have that with them to see, you know, who was responsible for creating their dress, and they really liked that. It's exciting to them. Obviously, for us, it's a yard of fabric and not that much time, and for them, it's their only other outfit that they have until it is completely worn out, and there's little left to it. So this was my favorite day by far. There is Dr. Swick working with kids. It was like a swarm anytime anyone had something cool. This is actually on our campus, so they do have some farming and agriculture there to support themselves. I don't know exactly what those crops are, but this is over at Standard High School. Jason did some science experiments for the kids, which they loved, and that, he's actually standing with their physics teacher at their high school, so he could teach the kids and the teacher some new things at the same time. We had, this was our stop at the marketplace. We made guacamole one night for our chef, and they weren't sure how they felt about it, but it was exciting for us to go in and see all of that. There's a typical meal of what we would eat at the Cove site. So we have some Irish potatoes, rice, some stew made out of tree nuts, motteauke under the peel. They were big fans of motteauke, Jason and Matt. I think we had fish, cabbage, and potato, or no, I mean pumpkin, I believe, in there. So it was very typical, they did a wonderful job. We definitely did not go hungry. This is one of the libraries. We, Vernon Hills and Ellen, I wasn't very involved with this, book friends sent a large donation to Uganda and created libraries in tons of different schools, so we got to see all, not all of them, but a majority of them when we went to visit, and that was one of them. And no matter how small a library is there, to them, it's something, and these brand-new books, you can see it looks beautiful, it's colorful, they have resources they can go to, they have class sets of things, which is something new for a lot of the teachers Dr. Swick was a master in volleyball. She had to play in a skirt and sandals, unfortunately, and I think we lost.
We won one game.
But we won one game, but we lost the entire set, or whatever, but it was a lot of fun. This...
You know, before you go, just what inspired you the most about the trip? Just if you could just kind of share with the board.
Well, a couple of things. Every day, I mean, it just got better and better, a new thing came your way, and you couldn't believe that it beat out whatever happened yesterday. One of the really important things that I'd like to tell everyone who asks about the trip is that it's awesome to see that whatever we do here at Vernon Hills, whether it's, you know, "Oh, we're doing the 5K for Cove," or "We're raising money." It's like, okay, sure, we can donate some dollars, that's all right, but when we go there, the impact that our resources that we're giving or having are tremendous. It doesn't compare, when you see our school, it's so nice, the kids are getting a great education, the teachers there are really excited to learn from us so that they can improve for their students. So I think the best part is knowing that whatever we do here really goes back and makes a difference there.
Oh, perfect timing.
My name is Tiffany Heinlein. I'm one of the counselors here, and before I start, I just want to say, you know, I would consider myself a pretty, I think I've traveled quite a bit around the world, and I've never experienced a trip quite like this. So I'm so thankful to be part of it, and I hope to continue a partnership with them in one way or another. Just going on the campus, the children were incredible. Just when they saw you, the way their eyes lit up and the smiles, they'd come chasing after the van every time they saw the van pulling up to the Cove site. I mean, it was just, I mean, it just broke your heart every time you saw them, and just saying goodbye was just heart-wrenching. This was their dorm. They all have mosquito nets, they all have a little trunk that they keep their belongings in, and then the mattresses. This was them in the library, this is at St. Jerome's Center, the library. So all those books, or most of those books come from the book friends, that's the non-for-profit in Waukegan and the help of Vernon Hills put together. So this is Ellen with her sponsor child, and was that your sister's?
My sister's, yeah.
So they're all a family now, so they became friends after they found out that they were both somehow connected to Ellen. This is us at the site where the first, the building that was donated from the first round. This is the, it's P1, P2, and P3, so first grade, second grade, and third grade is taught in this building. And I'm going to let the girls talk about this.
And the last two days was the safari, so now the two most important people, can you believe these two kids organized the teacher workshop for the teachers of Vernon Hills? It was unbelievable. But this is Megan Dorsey and Katie France, and why don't you guys just start about what, just briefly what the trip meant to you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Megan, and this trip was just absolutely amazing. What I tell people who ask me about it is that there are three things that I loved. One of them was being able to sponsor my own child and meet her and her mother and tell her that I'm going to be paying for education, because that was a really rewarding moment for me. A second one would be just the absolute poverty that they're in, but at the same time, they're the happiest people I've ever met. So it was a crazy mix of emotions. And the third thing I would say is all these people back here, they're just really awesome and the best people to be with on that kind of trip, so I'm just grateful for all the experiences I had with them, too.
I'd say that the biggest thing that I took away from the trip was just the, kind of marveling at the opportunity to appreciate and observe another culture and just realize how, how good we have it here, but also at the same time, how different but similar we are to people around the world.
So talk for a couple of these, well, this is the safari we went on, so of course, they kind of say elephants.
Yeah, so this is us in front of Murchison Falls, and it was a five-hour drive from where we were staying, so that was a long day. That was a draft, and I was really excited about it, because we got so close to it.
Megan had the best camera, she got all the great shots of the safari.
Yeah, and that's a leopard, like, we got that close to a leopard.
Oh, my gosh. Our guy who was in charge, she, we were on the road, and she spotted this leopard from like a mile away and told the driver to like go off the path and into the grass, and we did, and we got really close.
That was a hippo, and we were really scared of the hippos, because they're actually the most aggressive animal, if you didn't know that, so it was kind of scary. And then there is Mr. Clifford and Ms. Johnson. So that's the van we were in for the safari. The first day was a van thing where we were on ground. And then we took a boat tour of the Nile and went to Murchison Falls.
And that was a fall.
And there's us on the boat, and then there's us painting again.
Back the last day for the shopping.
And so this was the girls' dormitory, that's Mr. Clifford, and there's all of us, and that's it.
Great, thanks, you guys.
Okay, very nice. Dr. Swick, just one question, since 2009, I mean, how much has it changed there?
Yeah, I mean, when I, I went for the dedication in 2009, and our school wasn't even, that primary 1-2 wasn't even built. It was just two medical buildings, and so since then, they've added a 3, 4, 5 building, two dormitories, a kitchen, and they just now have just a 6, 7 building to complete. They're just going to be an elementary school, so they have one more building. They have a new class, they bring 35 kids, first graders, in every year and move up. And so the 6th grade is ready to go move up, and there's no building for them, so they're rushing to get a building built for the last two of them.
Great, all right, great job.
Ellen, how do they pick those 35 people?
They get interviewed. They have certain criteria with families, no more than two kids per family can be sponsored by Cove, many of them are large families, and they go through an interview process, and they have certain, you know, they can't, they got to make sure that they won't be tardy, they have to be willing to come back and work at the Cove site, that type of thing. So they get interviewed, and they pick the media samples, which is a lot of, it's a very high-powered area.
Great, okay. President's report, just one thing, next two student school board meetings I cannot make, so I have some conflicts I can't resolve. So anybody that's interested in attending the lunch, just let me know, make sure. They are the same day as the committee meeting, so second Monday of each month, I believe. Okay. Student school board reps, who would like to go first?
I'll go first. Okay. Hello. So I'm going to start with sports. So football team is 1-3. We won our first game last week, so that was very exciting. Powderpuff is starting, that's a girls' flag football thing that we do, and I am not a sporty young lady, but somehow I became a captain of a team, so we'll see how that goes. The girls' tennis team is currently 7-3, they're doing very well, along with cross-country. Cross-country is killing it this year. Girls', boys' cross-country is fourth in the 2A division, and the girls' cross-country team have won all of their conference meets, so they're 3-0. Moving on to fine arts, band, orchestra, and choir students are working on ILMEA. It's where they do all-state orchestra and all-state band and choir, and it's a good goal to have, and if you see in the fine arts hallway, pictures of all the students, this is what they do, they audition, and they make it. Musical by the birdie is in full swing, everything is completely memorized, so it's really happening. And academics, the National Merit Scholars were announced, one of them was one of my very good friends, that was very exciting for everybody. And then also, I was told last time to download the app, the District 128 app, so I did, and it's really convenient for Power School and the calendar. That was my, those are my two favorite parts of the app, so that's all I have to say.
Great, thank you.
Libertyville's Homecoming is this Saturday, so everyone is very, very excited. Today was the first day of our Dress Up Days throughout the week, so it was pajama day, and then we actually adopted color wars from Vernon Hills, and so I think that's Thursday, so everyone's really excited for that. Powderpuff, our games are on Thursday, and so all the senior girls are very excited about that. We are changing, so Homecoming Court was announced, and they're changing, they're making lots of different traditions, and I think everyone's a little wary about it, but I think the new traditions will end up benefiting Libertyville. Debate team, novice training went well, and they're looking forward to a productive year. Football lost last week in a not-so-close game against Stevenson, but we're looking for redemption this Friday. Boys' soccer lost in the semifinals of the Pepsi Showdown, and I think the school is just really excited, and there's a feeling in the air of just really excited for Homecoming, the spirit.
And what are some of the new traditions?
For Homecoming Court, instead of doing, I was told that we're classing it up, so it's going away from a different, a crazier theme of dancing down the gym in front of everyone, as in, we're walking, and there's 16, instead of the Homecoming Court deciding how they walk in, we are going, they are going to be escorted by 16 senior boys chosen for outstanding character, academics, and I think it's just, yeah, it's just going to be a little bit different, but people are generally excited.
Good, great, all right, thanks very much.
Mixing my words up.
Oh, okay. Oh, congratulations. Okay, superintendent's report.
Okay, we'll start with more good news this evening. First of all, the following LHS and VHHS students were named 2014 National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. At LHS, Jack Bommerich, Heather Legon, Timothy Lee, Joseph Nedlin, Maxwell Sun, Chaz Wonderlick, and Brenda Zanzee. At Vernon Hills, Russell Blickhan, Catherine Kuzwaru, Allison Skiatis, Justin Song, and Eric Jean. Sorry, I just heard the background noise out there. Nearly 1.5 million students from 22,000 high schools took the 2012 PSAT NMSQ test. 699 students from Illinois representing 16 high schools qualified as semifinalists. That number represents less than 1% of each state's high school seniors. As a semifinalist, all of the D-128 students will continue in the process to qualify as a National Merit finalist, so congratulations to all of them. LHS physics teacher Mark Bucin was named one of 11 finalists for the prestigious Illinois State Board of Education Those Who Excel Teacher of the Year Award. The winner of the ISVE Teacher of the Year Award will be chosen by Illinois State Superintendent Dr. Chris Cook, and will be announced during the Those Who Excel banquet Saturday evening, October 19th, at the Bloomington-Normal Marriott Hotel and Conference Center in Normal. The Teacher of the Year will represent the state of Illinois at NASA Space Camp in Huntsville, Alabama, and in the Council of Chief State School Officers National Teacher of the Year Program. And Marina and I have talked, and Marina has communicated, Mark represents the best of everything in this district, and will represent his colleagues, LHS and District 128 well. There will be several of us will be at that awards ceremony, which is normally over 1,000 people there for the banquet. It is a big deal, and they do a really good job with it. The 2012-13 VHHS Wind Ensemble, under the direction of Randy Sandell, has been selected as a Mark of Excellence National Winner. The Foundation for Music Education rated the band among the top 25% of auditioning groups from across the country. This is the third consecutive year that the VHHS Wind Ensemble has received this prestigious honor. LHS Fine Arts Department staff members Kevin Holly and Willa Innis received an award in the annual communications contest sponsored by the Illinois Chapter of the National School Public Relations Association, or INSPIRA. They received an award of merit in the marketing materials category for the 2012-13 LHS Fine Arts Calendar, and were honored at a luncheon held September 20th at Maggiano's in Oakbrook, and Marina and I had, were very fortunate to be with that group, as well as Mary. And if you've forgotten, Mary Todrick is serving as the president of INSPIRA this year. Mary did a great job with the program last Friday. On Friday, September 13th, the LHS Boys' Cross-Country Team completed its annual Adopt-A-Highway Project through the village of Libertyville. The team cleaned up Park Avenue between, well, Milwaukee and Fourth Street. On Saturday, September 14th, the VHHS Boys' and Girls' Cross-Country Teams helped pack food at the Feed My Starving Children's Center in Libertyville. In two hours, they packed enough food to provide 57,000 meals for malnourished children from over 70 countries around the world. The following LHS and VHHS winter athletic teams qualified for the IHSA Team Academic Achievement Awards. These teams achieve a cumulative grade point These teams achieved a cumulative grade point average of 3.0 or higher during last season. At LHS, girls' basketball, boys' basketball, girls' bowling, boys' bowling, cheerleading, dance, girls' gymnastics, boys' swimming and diving, and wrestling. At VHHS, in the winter, girls' basketball, boys' basketball, girls' bowling, boys' bowling, competitive cheerleading, competitive dance, and boys' swimming and diving. Congratulations to LHS tennis coach Craig Hunter, who will be inducted into the Lake County High School Sports Hall of Fame on Thursday, October seventeenth, at the Midlane Golf Resort in Wadsworth. As always, it's just fun to report on all the great things that are going on in the district. Next, we want to take a few minutes, since ultimately what measures our success in the district is, are our students growing and are they achieving at higher levels? And we have yet again some great news to report on that front. And I want to present Dr. Rita Fisher, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, who will highlight some of our student achievement results from the 2012-13 school year. Rita?
Thank you. Good evening. We are very excited to share with you the results of the hard work that our students, our teachers, our families engage in, given the resources that we have in this district to provide students with an excellent education. I was, it was kind of struck when we saw the Uganda presentation with how fortunate we are to have the resources that we do in this district, to have the excellent teachers that we have. And, and this is why we're able to achieve in the way that we do. So we're starting with the ACT composite score averages. This is the graduating class data from the class of 2013. And we're very happy to announce that the district composite overall went up to 25.5, which is a district high. Over the last five years, the district average has continued to trend up. And this is especially significant this year. ACT changed its reporting practices just a bit, so that 25.5 composite score, for the first time, includes all students who, in the class of 2013, took ACT tests, those who took the test with accommodations, as well as those who did not. And this is the first time that ACT has reported the scores in that way. So if you want to compare apples to apples, the 2012 score of 25.3 actually would have gone up to 26.2 if scores had been reported in the same way as they were previously. From this point on, ACT will continue to report the scores in that way. So we'll stop separating out the data, but just for this one year, to compare kind of apples to apples, we wanted to share that information. So really excited about district overall averages on the ACT, which is, you know, a measure that can be used to compare schools to schools and D-128 schools, students and schools compare very favorably with those in the state of Illinois continuing to far exceed state, state averages. The Libertyville High School composite score went up to 26.0 from 25.3. Or again, if you look at the same calculation as the previous year, Libertyville's composite score would have been 26.7. Again, a high for Libertyville High School. Vernon Hills' score would have remained the same as the previous year, which represented a big bump for them from previously. So the 25.4 score that Vernon Hills received or earned, based on the same calculations as 2012, marked a significant ability to retain that jump that Vernon Hills had experienced the previous year. The next segment focuses on the Advanced Placement Program in the district. It is really exciting to know that the district AP program has continued to grow over the last five years. And that while the program has grown, an increasing number of students taking exams, the overall success rate of students in the district remains very stable. So more and more students are experiencing the rigor of AP classes. More and more students are earning grades that could get, gain for them a significant amount of college credit at the university. The first slide shows this program growth for the district. The first set of data looks at the number of AP students. And you can see from 2009 until the 2013, May of 2013, the district increased from 702 students experiencing an AP exam to 993 students. And of those students, 2,116 exams were taken in 2013. And eighteen hundred and eighty-five of those exams earned three fours or fives, which generally is considered the benchmark for colleges considering those exams for credit. So exciting growth, exciting opportunities for students in the district, and a really significant growth over time that the College Board has recognized for D-128 in growing its program while maintaining the very high success rates that compare it favorably with other schools and districts as well. So these next graphs show the growth broken down by Libertyville and Vernon Hills High Schools. Both schools showing growth over time in the numbers of students taking exams, the, the number of exams administered, and the number of exams earning appropriate scores for possible college credit. So, you know, to summarize kind of the growth in the district, the trends in the district, there's been a 41% increase in the last five years in students taking AP exams, a 44% increase in exams, and a 42% increase in those exams earning threes, fours, or fives, which is really significant growth for a high-achieving district like 128, which already had a very successful and strong program to begin with. So to show that kind of growth and to offer opportunities for students in the way that the district has is really exciting and commendable. You can see that our pass rate, or the rate of students earning threes, fours, and fives is a very healthy 89.1, which compares to the global mean of 60.8 and the Illinois average of 66.3. So again, our districts compare very favorably, our district students compare very favorably with students across the country and in the state of Illinois. Final segment of the student achievement presentation tonight looks at the Prairie State Achievement Exam administered in April of 2013 to juniors. On that exam, the calculation of students who meet and exceed standards is represented by the graph that you see here. And it's really just a visual to show, the purple line being state averages, and the lines above it, the kind of turquoise line at the top, the ever-increasing target that the state has put in place to meet the requirements of No Child Left Behind. So in 2013, to meet AYP, 92.5% of district students had to meet or achieve standards. Very few districts in the state of Illinois met that standard when, when No Child Left Behind was put into place. And by 2014, 100% of the students in the state were expected to meet standards. It was known that that was an unachievable mark and target, and, and that is what has played out over the state. District students are doing very well and showing increased percentages, meeting and exceeding, and doing so at a far greater rate than those of students in the state. So the next few slides just show us that, you know, our district students are performing well above state averages and, in many cases, are meeting and exceeding standards, but not at that degree of 100% expectation that arbitrary imposed 100% that, you know, would be a challenge and is a challenge for any district in the state to meet. The math performance shows the same thing. And again, really what we're just highlighting here is the difference between the purple line, state averages, and the very healthy growth of both district schools, as well as the district average and the lines above that. Science is the same story for the district. So, you know, our concluding remarks about PSAE is that this is the last year, that this, this coming year will be the last year that the PSAE will be administered in the form that we know it, and that legislators are considering how to adjust state accountability measures as we approach the 2014-15 administration of a different type of exam from PSAE. What we have with student achievement data.
I just have one question. I apologize if I didn't ask this when we reviewed in committee. I see our three, four, and five scores are going up, but I think most of the colleges actually are now looking for fours and fives.
Yes, they are.
Do we see increases even at the four and five level?
Yes. The, you know, College Board continues to report out scores of three fours and fives as their measure of reporting acceptable scores and passing scores. But it is very true that colleges and universities are very selective and that each one, you know, has different expectations for the scores that they will accept. District students continue to achieve, you know, the, the section averages that are far above those of the, you know, the average in the state, as well as the nation. And our percentage of fours and fives is increasing as well. And that's something we can report and track in next year's report as well, to kind of highlight that difference between threes, fours, and fives and those earning fours and fives, which are more generally acceptable.
Okay, thanks. Nice job.
Good job. Rita, thank you very much for your work on putting that in a very usable format for all of us, with a lot of the data that we've reviewed since the Cayman last spring. And we get some of that data over the summer and sometimes into late summer moving forward. Just a couple of comments in general. One, our achievement data once again should place us in easily within a top 2% of all public high schools in the United States, since it's continuing to rise and increase. And on the Advanced Placement, I would think that we are in very good position to win our third annual Advanced Placement Award, which will place us one out of five or 600 school districts in the entire United States. And that award is about increasing opportunities for students to take Advanced Placement classes while maintaining, either attaining a high average of students successfully doing three, fours, and fives, or maintaining a very high average. And if you go back 15 years in this district, when Dave Cluffer started here, one of his main goals was to double the number of students in Advanced Placement. And if you look at our trend data, over that period of time, we, we've done that and more at this point, while gradually actually raising the number of students that are taking three, fours, and fives. And it's the richness and the rigor of that curriculum that's important, even for some of the students who choose not to take the test on their own. So that's very exciting for the district. And I think we would probably agree that that is also helping our overall achievement go up in the district, as we have more students that are exposed to that rigorous national curriculum. Secondly, we want to give big thanks and our appreciation to Ellen Swick and Marina Scott, their instructional leadership teams, their teachers, and their support staffs at their building for their continued outstanding work. As we often say, the rubber hits the road in a school district where adults are working with students at the building level. And so the most important work that goes on in this district every single day is the work that goes on that Ellen and Marina lead in their building in working with students. So we ought to stop and give you a round of applause on behalf of your entire team. So great. Outstanding. So we're, we're very fortunate to, to have the great people we have in the district, but it also takes leadership to move an organization forward, as we're all aware. So we've got two of the best principals on the face of the planet, and we're very fortunate in that regard. Bo, I have, we have one more slide, if you want to go ahead and put that up right now? Pat, if you would pass that that way. Jim, if you would go that way. The board has already seen this information at committee meeting, but we just wanted to highlight this one more time for the community. And we have an innovative performance recognition bonus built into our current contract. And to the credit of our D-128 union, as well as the board and the administration in the district, we were able to work together on a very creative, we think innovative program to recognize teachers and employees of the district for outstanding work over a period of time in, with indicators that are meaningful, things that we pay attention to, things that we measure our success by. And we use a, an average of the previous five years' results in the percentage of students tested in Advanced Placement, the percentages of three, fours, and fives, our overall ACT composite for the district, our PSAE scores, and extracurricular participation right now, which is focused on athletics, as we are establishing some baseline data in the fine arts and student activities. So that will also be a part of that number in the future. As you recall, last year, the first year of this innovative performance recognition bonus, the staff earned four of the five criteria targets that they needed to hit to earn the bonus. The one that we did not earn last year was PSAE. We're happy to report that this year we have met five out of the five performance criteria, including PSAE. And the board will be able to see this easier than they can on the screen, but just let me hit a couple of highlights. The target for a percentage of AP students tested was 20.8. We were at 29.4. The target for percentage of three, fours, and five scores on the test was 87.7. We earned 89.1. Our ACT composite target was 24.8. Our district composite was 25.5, as Rita mentioned, the district record. Our PSAE target was 80.8. We earned 81.5. And our percentage of participation in athletics, our goal was 90.2%, and we hit 90.1%. So as a result of the outstanding work of everyone at the building level and the district administrators who work to support the buildings as well, we are recommending tonight that the board authorize payment of the performance recognition bonuses, which will come in one single check in the first week of December, yes, I think is what we talked about, prior to the holiday season. So with that, I would request a motion to authorize payment of the performance recognition bonus.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Arthur?
Hi.
Batsen?
Hi.
Delly Collie?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batsen?
Aye.
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batsen?
Aye.
Motion carries. Program and Personnel Committee Chairperson Mauer.
Okay. The first item we have is Board Policy 7-180, Preventing Bullying, Intimidation, Harassment in our Students Section. There are no updates to the policy, but it does need to be refiled with the state every two years. So we are just reapproving this as a matter of course. We need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Batsen?
Aye.
Delly Collie?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Program and Personnel Committee Chairperson Mauer.
Okay. The first item we have is Board Policy 7-180, Preventing Bullying, Intimidation, Harassment in our Students Section. There are no updates to the policy, but it does need to be refiled with the state every two years. So we are just reapproving this as a matter of course. We need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Delly Collie?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Radsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batsen?
Aye.
Okay, and then next we have the first reading of three board policies. First is 2-105, Ethics and Gift Ban. And that policy defines and describes prohibited political activity and outlines limitations on receiving gifts by, by board members. And that is new to our district. The second policy, 2-120, Board Member Staff Development. And that clarifies the, the new mandatory board member trainings that we need to take, either as elected or every so often, every few years. Policy 7-340, Student Records. That policy is amended to align with changes in the school code regarding student records. It more clearly defines what a student record is. Any questions on those? Okay, so we don't need a motion on that. Those will be brought forward for a second reading next time. The next- Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Delly Polling.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Radsar.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Is going equally to each of the three maturities as are the refunding bonds. Okay, you don't have to do it that way. And Yasmin and I were talking earlier about, you know, if you're using part cash and part bonds, you might want to consider using your cash to pay off that longest maturity in 2017. Then you get the interest savings throughout those three years and could actually shorten up your debt as opposed to doing these proportional issues. But just for this example, we're showing it proportional so that the savings are equal to the taxpayer in each of the three years. Okay? So in this case, if we use four million of your own money, your annual savings are going to be one million six eighteen approximately. And that does start to impact the home. That's a fifty-seven dollar savings per year or a hundred and seventy-two dollars over the three years. The net savings, if you take the total savings of four point eight million, subtract the four million that you're using of your own funds, the net savings is eight hundred and fifty-three thousand. And the present value savings is six eighty-one. So that's with four million of cash. The next page looks at if we use that four million of cash, what does it do to our fund balances? So what you do is you, and we took the money from the education fund because you have strong fund balance there. You would pass a resolution to transfer four million from the education fund to the debt service fund. Okay? So that would reduce your operating fund balances by four million and put you just about even with where you started last year at a hundred and nineteen million on ending fund balance or a hundred and fifty-eight percent of annual expenditures. Next page looks at reusing about eight point seven million cash and eight point seven million refunding bond. So this is kind of the half and half option. So in this case, the annual savings to the taxpayers, three point two million or about a hundred and fifteen dollars on that three hundred thousand dollar market value home. The net savings in this case is up to a million twenty-two thousand five eighty-three, net savings. Present value savings is approximately the same. The next page shows the impact on the operating funds of taking out eight point seven million dollars. So in this case, our fund balance goes from a hundred and nineteen million down to a hundred and fourteen million. Or a hundred and fifty-two percent. The next option C is the twelve million option, again, as if we're going to take four million for each of the next three years. The savings with interest is four point three million or a hundred and fifty-five dollars per year on the home for almost, for four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And the net savings is a million one forty-four, one fifty. So the savings, the more money you put down, the higher the savings to the taxpayer. Next page looks at the impact of twelve million on the budget. So you transfer twelve million from the education fund to the debt service fund and that would take your fund balances down to a hundred and forty-eight percent or a hundred and eleven million. And then option D is a full cash payoff where you take seventeen million two seventy of your fund balance and you just pay off all the bonds. Okay? So the savings to the taxpayers is, you know, the eighteen million six nineteen, the total debt service over that time. So if we subtract the seventeen, seven twenty, it's going to be about nine hundred thousand net, net interest savings. Or one million three forty-nine, net savings, sorry. Okay? So those are the options we looked at. And of course, here's the impact on the operating funds. To pay off all the bonds, seventeen million two seventy would be transferred to the debt service fund and that takes your operating fund balances down to a hundred and five million or a hundred and forty-one percent. So you can see the different impacts. There's so many ways we can slice and dice this. I think the key question for you as board members is what cash, if any, are we willing to let go and use to pay down debt? Otherwise, we have a real nice refunding option here with the current call date being January one. In terms of timing to make the decision, we have really till the end of November because we need for that January one call date, and you want to call them at the earliest call date so you can get as much interest savings as you can. We need to give the bondholders a thirty-day call notice. Okay? So we really need to make that decision by the end of November at the latest. The next page, just as a recommendation, I talked about this earlier, that, that we think you should prepare the resolution, which you have in your board packets tonight, to move ahead on the refunding. The resolution authorizes the total refunding in bonds. Okay? So it doesn't contemplate a cash deposit. But of course, you need to tell me how much cash, if any, you're feeling comfortable to, to put towards paying off these bonds. The earliest we could do the refunding is ninety days prior to the call date or October first. And we already discussed that bank qualified doesn't really help you in this case. So the next section looks at the financing schedule. And here we are at the September twenty-third meeting. I know you talked about this in your finance committee. So tonight you have before you what's called a parameters bond resolution, which authorizes the board to move forward with the refunding without another board meeting. Of course, you can have more meetings to discuss the cash if you're not ready to decide on that tonight. But the parameters resolution delegates the authority to move forward with the, with the refunding to the board president and the assistant superintendent of finance. Okay? So once you pass a parameters resolution, there really is no need to formally look at that resolution again. Questions?
My initial comment is I think this is a good news, good news scenario. We have the opportunity to, we have these bonds that are coming due in the next three years. We have an opportunity to pay them off with cash reserves that we have that are healthy balances. We also are sitting in a situation where the interest rates are very low and we could basically refinance the remaining three years of these bonds at a much lower rate and save some money. So I think it's, you know, we have to look at it as a balance between how much cash, as you were suggesting, and how much we may want to actually just refinance and pay off over the next three years. But it's a good news, good news. Either way, we're going to save some money. It's just how that money, you know, how that savings comes to us and at what point in time. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I, I believe it's a great idea to refinance, but as I've said for years now, I'd really like to find out what's happening in the state before we start completing our reserve funds. So I continue to be against anything and everything here if it involves giving money back. So I'd like to see two motions perhaps at some point where we can say, do we want to refinance this or give you the authority to do that? And then the second question being, do we want to give money back? And I don't think that's in the best interest of this community at the, at the current time in light of the state's condition. So nothing's changed in my, my thought process. And I love the find the refinance idea.
Well, I think we're, I mean, we're talking about three years forward. Nothing's going to change in the state or in the district that's going to impact us by twenty million dollars over the next three years. I mean, for us, and I know this at the, we talked before, it's not the William Blair answer, but refunding these bonds, calling them off, paying them off with current reserves saves the district one point three million dollars. And we can't just blow away that kind of money. And if we partially refund some of them, we save less than that. We still are going to pay the bonds back within three years and we will pay more interest in the meantime. So I mean, to me, it's, it's a simple solution for us. Hundred twenty-three million dollars reserves, pay off seventeen million, it brings this issue down to zero. It pre-abates that money for the next three years. We kind of lock our strategy in. We still have a reserve that's a hundred and forty percent of our, our current budget. And I think it'd almost be malpractice to not do that because we can save over a million dollars for the district over the next three years. And, you know, I, everyone understands that there are things happening, but nothing's happening that fast. It's going to impact the repayment of these bonds, whether we do it today or over the next three years. I mean, there's no pension solution, there's nothing's going to come into play that quickly that would ever impact our budgets to, to also have that decision. So I mean, I hate, I hate for the community to think we're going to keep borrowing money that we don't need. I want them to know we can save money by refunding, by paying the bonds, calling the bonds and paying them off completely. And that's a big number, one point three million dollars. It's a big number. So I, I mean, I don't, I don't know why we would fully do otherwise right now.
I, I think what we have, you know, sort of in front of us, the option to do is to, the resolution that's in front of us is to allow us to take formal action to, to refinance up to the amount of the seventeen nine, but not lock us into that. And I think we have some time at some subsequent meetings that we can have some further discussion and really come to that balance on what, what we might want to refinance, what we might want to just pay down with some reserves. You know, I understand both sides of the issue here. There is some savings to be had either way. We don't want to miss this opportunity to, to do one or the other. It's just how much more, you know, where does that savings come from and at what point in time? So I think we have some opportunity here. So my understanding is, you know, we can do some kind of resolution tonight to put us on record to say, we're authorizing the district to do some refinancing up to this amount, but we still have some opportunity to discuss it before that happens and to talk about how much we might want to take out of the reserves to pay off some of this before we refinance.
Was that, there's, there's some upfront work being done as of tomorrow, though. Let's say we go along that track and then we decide in two weeks we're not going to do any refunding at all. You will spend some time and money, I think, on the offering documents and things like that.
Yeah, you know, I don't think we're going to move ahead with that until you guys tell us if, you know, how much cash, if any.
How much?
Right, so just let's clarify. So by passing the resolution tonight, if we were to have one final conversation on this topic, say at the next committee meeting, right, fifteenth, at that point, whatever we decide, we could move forward with because we've passed a resolution tonight.
And that's correct, Elizabeth, right?
Yeah. Otherwise, we got to come back and vote it again, right? Which, I mean, to my way of thinking isn't really a good thing. The longer we delay, the more likely it is that these rates take back up again and, you know, I don't know, they're going to move a lot, but.
What you could do in terms of communicating to the public, if we went that direction, then we have a discussion on the fifteenth if we decided to move that direction, even though we don't need to bring the resolution back to the full board. I think the way that we've worked before is at our October board meeting, we would report back out to the community on record so they would know what we, the board had done, even though we're not required to do that legally. Elizabeth, one, one other question. If the board got further into the discussion and decided they didn't want to do anything, passing the resolution tonight, it doesn't bind us to actually take further action, correct? Can the board say we don't want to do?
Right.
We decided we don't want to do anything.
Changed our mind.
Although we, yeah, that's a good technical, but we will do something.
You know, and I, I know that. I want to make sure we're not doing any work, though, that would not be, you know, beneficial for you guys, ready agency work, preparation of documents, thing like that. We don't want to get the lawyers.
Right, what I hear is you're going to stand down and hold until you get a final word on what we're doing.
Correct. Correct. I mean, the bond lawyers have put together the resolution as a parameters resolution, but if you decide to rescind that resolution and not do anything at a future date, that they're not going to send you it back.
Elizabeth, the other, I guess I would ask the board, would you like Elizabeth or one of her colleagues to be at the committee meeting on Tuesday the fifteenth in case you have some additional questions based on the presentation? We've been essence, you guys have done a great job with the presentation both times, but you may want somebody there to answer some deeper questions. And if not, we can save Elizabeth another night out.
I mean, I get the sense we have what we need. It's just a question of making the decision with respect to how much cash are we willing to part with.
Yeah, I, I think we have.
That's right. I think all, those models are all there and.
Yeah, I think we have what we need from Elizabeth especially. I think the thing that I would like to see in my mind, and we can discuss this at, at the committee meeting, is the overall impact to the taxpayer. And, and we've been in this mode of doing some abating of some taxes relative to these bond payments. And so looking at the next three years and how this impacts each, you know, an average taxpayer, the three hundred thousand dollar home taxpayer, or whatever target we want to use to, to look at it over the, the period of time. Because it changes things on both the operating and on the bond piece, depending on whether we refinance or whether we pay it off. So I think that, that trajectory is, is an important one for me.
Right, and at the October committee meeting, it is my intention to bring to you my projections too. Also, we are working on a revised capital projects list to have an idea of what is out there as far as future needs of the district. So you have been in a better position to make a decision.
Yeah, so that's.
Will you have revenue projections then? Because really, what this boils down to is, I mean, if we're going to, it depends on how much money we're going to take going forward. I mean, okay, so you'll have that?
I'm working on it.
Okay.
And again, just for the community, we had a fairly extensive part of the conversation at the committee meetings was, we didn't want to jeopardize the large capital projects that we've, you know, authorized to kind of move forward with at this point. And it looks like, you know, that's all factored into the equation here moving forward, that we would want to continue to move forward with those larger capital projects and not have this impact us. And it appears that it would not.
Which again, though, we should roll that in forecast our fund balances given those projects as well, just so we can look at the total pay. Where are we going to end up in three, four years from now?
I think it's a good idea to approve this resolution.
Yeah, I would like to bring up the capital because I really want to see how that impacts the whole picture.
One other question, Jim, or someone mentioned abatement and he has or Elizabeth for correture. This would in essence, if we did this at some level, this would in essence, we would no longer be abating.
Correct.
Okay, so this would be a bill, bill to your point, kind of a built-in abatement.
Right.
Yeah, again, let's clarify that. So I mean, the reason we abated in the last two years is these, these bonds were not callable and we could not take this action from the call, right? What's changed is now we can call the bonds and we can refinance.
But it was a convenient way to, to do the abatement. It was the right fund to take the money out of, it was easy to scalp it out of that fund.
Yeah, basically, we were giving back to the taxpayers a, a portion of the payment for these bonds and we were paying those bonds out of another fund.
We're just doing that ahead of time. But, but still, you know, we're running a sort of negative arbitrage. Now we've got seventeen million dollars in the bank earning point one percent and we're paying four or two or three or whatever the numbers might be. We were spending money to keep this, that, that we're spending might keep whatever we keep us in.
What I should also mention here is that there is one additional bond payment that is not part of this refinancing, which is due on January one of two thousand and fourteen.
So the current.
They're going to pay that off anyway. You're going to pay that off anyway.
Yes, because I just wanted you to know that is our.
How much do the numbers change if you don't do this across all the different bonds? You just, let's say, pay off the, the longest ones because?
That would be the best thing.
Because that actually gets you down even to the lowest of the low interest rates too, right?
That'd be the best thing to do. This way the taxpayer, you know, see sort of a decline at the end of the year as opposed to throughout.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm going to take this to the October finance committee and cashing out the details.
Again, I think it's a, either way we go, we're going to save some money. It's just.
How much?
How much and how much are we willing to, you know, invest out of our savings, basically, that we're also using for some capital projects? So it's a balance and we have to come up with any strength.
So what's the motion?
Okay.
Elizabeth, does Jim have to read the?
Want me to read it?
Whoever doing the motion actually have to read what we had written, yes?
Yes. Just the paragraph.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed seventeen million nine hundred thousand dollars general obligation refunding school bonds of community high school district number one twenty-eight, Lake County, Illinois, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds of said school district and providing for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds.
Negative. Okay, discussion or again, just to clarify, passing this resolution tonight allows us to take action between now and the next board meeting, which we will finalize somewhere between then without the need to take another vote. Okay, just to make sure we're clear on that. And we would come back at the following board meeting and basically explain to the public the action we chose to do.
Right. Bring them up to date as to what was discussed at the committee.
So essentially what we're agreeing to is we're agreeing to, we can take action up to and including refinancing the whole thing, doing nothing or refinancing.
Or the public could come to the October.
Well, I was going to say.
They can hear all about it.
I was going to suggest that that will be a rather good substantive discussion, I think, at that committee meeting. So for those of you who have always wanted to come and see the board actually in action as opposed to just approving stuff, I would highly encourage you to attend that session.
October fifteenth, six P M. in the Libertyville High School library.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Delly Bowley?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Monstee?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Good job.
Okay, next one I'm going to get, let Yasmin speak to as well, but this is the voting for the two thousand thirteen aggregate tax levy.
At our September committee meeting, once again, we discussed the aggregate tax levy, a discussion we have in September every year, basically to determine whether or not the school district will need to have a truth in taxation notice and hearing if, in fact, our extension or our levy request is going to be five percent over the previous year's extension. As we discussed, once again, this year, we do not need to seek an increase beyond five percent with a CPI factor of one point five percent, a declining property base and limited new growth. We had talked about, about an increase of about four percent in aggregate tax levy. Basically, that is a levy, does not necessarily mean that is the amount of increase we will get. Chances are it will be less than half of the four percent. However, I did want to let you know that beyond our discussions, we received information from SEDOL where they have asked for an increase in their levy from a hundred and forty thousand the previous year to two hundred and twenty-eight thousand for fiscal year fourteen tax levy. And that amount is non-capped as per state legislation, so that is the amount that will be requested on their behalf by us. It is basically funds that we collect and then sort of write a check to them for the full amount. So with that said, if it's okay with you, if you'd approve the aggregate levy this evening, it'll just set up the base for future action.
So we're basically asking for four point.
One three.
Four point one three percent increase, fully expecting we will not.
Oh, absolutely.
Reach that four point, not, maybe not even half of that, once the tax cap goes into place. So it's, it's just to hedge our bets, basically, to capture possibly new construction that will come online that would, we wouldn't be able to capture if we didn't levy enough, those types of things.
And what it also does is it gives us the ability to, if needed, move the funds between the various funds that are there. So there's just a little bit of cushion, still keeping within the limits of the PT legislation.
So we're thinking it ultimately will be one point seven?
Plus new growth.
Yeah, plus new growth.
Plus the, you know, the SEDOL levy, which obviously is their request.
So somewhere two percent or, or less, regardless of what we asked for here.
Right.
Okay. We have a motion, please.
So moved?
Second, do you need to read the motion directly?
There isn't a motion on this as such. There's just, the motion will be at the, you can just basically read to the aggregate levy amount.
Yeah, the, the adoption of aggregate tax levy for two thousand, FY fourteen as recommended by administration.
So we had a motion and a second discussion.
Does SEDOL jump? What does that entail? Is part of that the groups that are jumping out of SEDOL and are driving?
No. Basically, what it is, is the IMRF payment for SEDOL employees. What had happened last year is they had used some of the surplus they had to negate the higher increase in SEDOL that, in IMRF that they were seeking. This year, obviously, the surplus is gone, so they need the money again. It would be like us abating one year and not the next year.
They get double, what's the, what's the total SEDOL increase for the year then? Because they got double back and they got that adding up.
Yeah, right now, districts has. Right, but districts who are still deciding to withdraw from SEDOL still have to pay the IMRF levy because that is an obligation. So it's not that, it's the fact that they had used some internal funds to kind of lower the levy request last year.
So they've artificially, they've artificially, they've kept it artificially low.
Right.
And now we're coming back up to.
Maybe you know more about it than I do at your, you know, with the.
Oh, it's about right.
All right.
So what, again, what is the total SEDOL increase we're thinking next year?
Well, they have requested that from last year's hundred and forty thousand, that it be increased to two hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Wow. They had a big jump several years ago.
There have been ups and there have been downs. The one forty was really low compared to the previous two or three years.
And that's our portion of the SEDOL.
That is correct. So every member school district is paying a proportion based on the equalized assessment.
And ours is going to be higher because our EIB is higher.
Correct. And in future years, it'll be higher because some of the high, wealthier school districts may not be part of SEDOL too.
So we had a motion for the four point one three percent and a second. Any other comments or discussions? We have a roll call.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Delly Bowley?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Monstee?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Okay, the next item is a, is an exciting item that we heard quite a bit about at our committee meeting earlier in the month, and that is a, how do you say this? Photovoltaic grant? It's basically, we're looking at generating electricity on, on the rooftops of our two buildings, using this both for possibly saving some money as well as academic purposes to enhance our science curriculum. It's solar energy, basically, is what's happening. Do we have any additional information from?
Basically, what we're asking tonight is for you to approve this application in concept. It is phase two of the application process and this requires board approval because there is a commitment, if this grant was to be awarded and accepted, that there would be a forty percent match from the school district.
So this is a group that's, that's preparing a, a grant, a second part of a grant that we got a very small portion of earlier.
Yes. We received about nine thousand previously with the solar panels both at Vernon Hills and Libertyville High School. And throughout this small project too, we've had our roofing contract very involved in it. There were a number of recommendations that were made as to how the solar panels should be put on the roof, what kind of material should be used to support it. So those kind of discussions have happened in the past two weeks after our meeting.
Big change, right?
Yes, we've asked for some modifications.
You had modifications too.
And how the panels were put up.
What is holding the panels on the roof are architect, as made recommendations to the gentleman who was in the audience that night, what would be acceptable to our roof? And he has contacted our roofing, the gentleman, Renifer Roofing, to work with him, so they are in contact.
Just that it's still the ballast without drilling a bunch of holes?
No, that's, no, well, there's going to have to be holes drilled. But that's before it's the ballast that our consultant is not too excited about that system. On the cinder block, he has made other, two different recommendations of what would be acceptable. And that's where they are working together. Soon as they agree to that, then our roofing contractor will be on the spot to therefore do the, the penetration. But we will do the penetrate, we are.
And if drilling a bunch of holes in the roof that'll do this, that was kind of contrary we were talking about.
There's going to have to be some penetration.
Well, will it be multiples hundreds?
No, that's.
I think that's the, that's the bigger issue.
But then what, how does that impact moving it? And now it's all the whole thing, it's all moving, moving forward.
In discussion of that, he also, our architect roofing consultant, said that he wants to input where this is going to be, because I use your scenario about moving furniture. And he said that, yes, there'd be an impact and a cost similar to when you move these units when you have to do roofing. And it says time is money, so the longer it takes to move these panels, the more the cost of the project would be. But it's workable and two, but that work together.
Did he give any indication, is it, is it ten percent, fifty percent?
So we'll take a look at those numbers when they come. And again, tonight, the grant is just authorizing us to move forward with the grant process to keep us in the game of the sixty forty split, sixty percent grant money, forty percent district cost.
And again, if we pull the plug on this, we haven't lost anything because we haven't received money on this grant. It just authorizes us to stay in the game if we move down this path. When we get the information and we look at it, if it's good or it's not good, then we can make a decision from there.
As of Sunday morning, third recommendation was made, so they are working.
They're working together.
Jess, have they done this roofing architect contractor work with solar things before?
Yes. He is very familiar. You ought to see somebody beating up that hole. Whoa! Yeah, so he knows he's talking about that.
Yaz, do we have an estimate of what 40% is dollar-wise?
I believe it was $7,800,000.
Yeah, it was in the presentation. That's the maximum. So what my understanding was, they're applying for a fairly large grant, the maximum that they will allow us to apply for through this grant process. We may get something less than that, and so our commitment would be 40% of whatever that grant comes in.
Right.
The payback period is like six or seven years.
Seven, eight years.
Seven, eight years.
And what's the life of the roof?
The life of the roof is twenty years.
Okay, so for the vast majority of the life of the roof, you're basically picking up money, saving money.
And using this for actually, you know, to empower the schools, will there still be interaction in the classroom?
That's the plan.
Yeah, yeah, that's the plan.
It won't be like right now, I know that you just had the small...
Yeah, this is not purely just to say something.
The kids are polishing the darn thing and people... If we don't get the grant in the second portion, the original four solar panels will be education.
Right.
That's the value of those four.
But will the experience for the students change because of the modifications?
Well, the scale will provide a lot more opportunities in the volume of electricity that's producing, oh, it's running. I mean, if you look at Mark and Mike Bush and our physics teachers, you know, they would, you know, that would be a great laboratory. Yeah, absolutely.
They'll see it in action versus this, basically showing them a problem, is really the nature there. At the end of the day, it's pretty soon. I want to see it, maybe run backwards, man.
Yeah.
It's doubtful, but I'm...
It'll be consumed, it'll never go backwards, but it might slow it down. We're just trying to slow it down.
We'll start in the morning, then run back.
It's still gonna spin like a meat slicer.
The next page is to put in charging stations for everybody to charge up their high voltage.
Yeah. We're green, leading the country in green schools, right?
So this, the motion that we're looking for is to support the 40% of the funding for this project. And assuming we get some or all of this grant, I would expect to, you know, come back and have some kind of presentation for demonstrating what we're in for at that point in time, or how big the grant is, and maybe some of the updates from the discussions with the roof.
This is all nonviolent for us, we're just rolling forward.
Right, we have to have your approval to move forward with the next step of the grant process, right? Nonviolent.
We need a motion in a second.
I move that we pursue the photovoltaic grant process.
Second.
Rer.
Any other comments or discussion? We have a roll call, please.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batsen?
Aye.
Dellyfowey?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Monstet?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda, discussion of Brainerd Building and Property. We did have some discussion at our committee meeting. I'll turn it over to Dr. Lee and...
Well, basically, I think as the board and community are aware, the Save Brainerd or Brainerd Preservation Group is working with the village to attempt to run a referendum in the March election to support work on the building so they can maintain the building and use it, it looks like, as an art center for the community. As we have continued to do, we are supportive of the effort of the group and any work that the village is doing with the group. To that extent, we have extended the lease counter at least three times, I think, to give them more time, based on the economy and some of the work that they're trying to do with that project. In the meantime, a couple of years ago, through Property Committee, we talked about the necessity for our district to begin to create a vision for that building and property if the building were to come back to us, with the concept that, again, while we are supportive of their efforts, if the building comes back to us, we know and just would remind us, if we forgot, that there is a run-up to doing anything on that property, including the demolition and the asbestos containment, let alone actually doing something to develop the property and a use that the board would see and Libertyville would see as effective as the overall, part of the overall strategy for LHS moving forward. So we've been working down that path for a couple of years, and at this point, Bryant Kelly and Jess, I asked to meet with our architect. As the board knows, we'd like to use that for green space, reconfigure the parking there so it's not such an odd shape, run it straight down in a longer line, similar number of parking spaces. The parking lot at the one end is very close to the playing field. That's a great concern for Bryant Kelly as the athletic director, and I'm sure the coaches and parents at that building. But it would allow us to have additional green space for use. We've asked them also to look at, basically, you're prompting, to look at possible causes as we're looking at that possibility for part or all of that to be a field turf, so it would be usable year-round, and it would have multiple uses moving forward. So Jess has met Anne Bryant with the architect, Mike Henderson from STR, and Mike will be working on some drawings, if you will, based on the feedback that Bryant gave him, who's obviously speaking for Marina as the building principal in terms of that. So we wanted the community to know that we're continuing to do our due diligence in moving forward with a plan that we can put into place reasonably soon if the referendum does not fail and if the building were to come back to us sometime in the next year as per the current lease agreement.
And we would put in a commemorative gazebo.
Yes, and we've talked at, really at Deb Larson's suggestion...
Right.
...as a way, and I think Pat initially brought this up, and I think Deb kind of took off of that idea, but we could use some of the bricks to make a small gazebo with a plaque on it to commemorate the old building. So Jess, I'll just remind you that we need to build that into a corner of the property.
It was already, this is about Thursday, and it'll go on the triangle part of our property, close to 176, and it'll be a picnic area, and it'll look very nice.
That's very good. And so just to remind the public again, who were not at our committee meeting, in that area would also include permanent restroom facilities for men and women and storage building, a permanent storage building. So that would all be incorporated in to that project there. So any other questions?
Do we deal with the timing of Mike having plans?
We said that the superintendent wanted to, yes, so we hope that he got the message that would be here for our quarter after that.
So it's imminent.
We may have to send that message one more time, but I think Jess did a good job of sending the message that I gave him to give Mike, so...
I mean, it's within the next month or two.
Right. And this doesn't require a vote, obviously, it's just...
Thank you. I think it's important that the public understands what our plans are for that, if, in fact, the referendum doesn't go through. I think that's an important information to get out.
Which, by the way, would be another topic for the public to come on and share their thoughts.
Yeah. Be happy to have six o'clock on October 15, Libertyville High School. We discussed briefly about CEDOL, what we had discussed in Facilities and Finance related to the CEDOL funding sources and the makeup of CEDOL as a consortium of school districts and the impact that may come from one or more of those districts pulling out of that group. I don't know that there's a whole lot of information, additional information, Yaz, do you have any other further?
I have a few.
Yeah, so it's something we'll keep our eye on as we move forward, but it'll certainly have some impact on us as a member of that, of the CEDOL group. I would, as long as I have the floor, just make one other request or comment, sort of a facilities-related thing, but tonight we have a little different device in front of us. We normally have some laptops. Tonight we have a Chromebook. And I'm not too sure how familiar people are with these devices, but I think it might be a helpful thing for the board to get a little briefing on what these are, and not just for what we use them for, but what they're used for in the district with the students and how these differ from the traditional laptop and what the benefits that we're gaining from this.
We're actually planning that as an educational presentation in the future because we have done a large rollout of Chromebooks or Chromebook-based books. These happen to be Samsungs, I believe, by model. And as you know, we are approaching a mult... We are using a multiple solutions approach where it's just not Chromebooks. It's going to be a multiple approach to technology rather than doing what's called a one-on-one rollout where every student gets an iPad. We want to make sure our teachers are trained to use the technology and they can integrate that instruction so those tax dollars are used well to move forward, and it's going to be multiple solutions again. So Jim, that's a great point, and we'll work with Mick and some of our instructional team who are using different modes of technology, including the Chromebooks.
I know I had a conversation with Mick in one of the opening day of that thing, and this plan was really great, I think, compared to some of the other...
This is very powerful, yet cost-effective device to use, and I think it's something that might be of interest to a lot of people.
Would be a great presentation.
Okay.
So that concludes the Facilities and Finance.
Okay, Property Committee, no update, correct?
One quick comment for chairperson, Arthur. Pretty much along the same lines as the conversation that Jess and I had with, on the Brainerd property, but we have met with Mike Henderson, Yaz and I have met with Mike Henderson from STR. One of the things that we are working on, that Stephen was working on with us with Property Committee, is to do a master, look at options for master, a master property plan for both of the buildings moving forward. It's a little easier at Vernon Hills because that was kind of laid out. If we do the second gym at Vernon Hills, we already built the locker room on the front of the building. We know where that space is. But that withstanding, we do want to look at Vernon Hills again, and we also want to look at Libertyville with the options that we might have for a master property plan. So we've asked Mike Henderson to do that as well with the same encouragement to be expeditious.
Sense of urgency.
Yes.
Nick, I think we need to do an enrollment projection, too. If we're gonna talk about checking in, we need to know this, too, as we're gonna have...
Well, we have that data, Bill, and we're flat going 10 years out. We're gonna go up, we're gonna go down a little bit. We will share that. Al, I thought we actually took that, but we can share that. We can share that at the next committee meeting with you, but there are no big dips in the road. As you look at our average out 10 years, it's pretty flat moving forward. But that, again, is good information to have, and we'll update that every year with the all mature districts.
All right, Special Education District of Lake County. Okay, we talked a little bit about the funding issues. There were really two other things at this month's meeting. One, they unveiled a new picture series in the administration building that really shows the kids in action, and it was really impressive. So if you've ever been there, it's a wonderful thing to see, or if you've never been there, it's a wonderful thing to see. And they also indicated they had finalized their teacher contract and I think settled at about 3% annual raises, plus or minus a little bit. So that was good news as well. I know they've been working on that for a while. Right? Illinois Association of School Boards?
Just a couple of things. The Lakes Division Dinner Meeting for the Fall is October 23. I will be attending on our behalf, but as with any of the meetings, anyone saying, you know, can certainly attend that. I would say let Denise know if you're...
Who's going right now?
I'm not a major issue. Looks like it's good as yet.